Being 5:30, I now call to order the regular meeting of the Lake Placid CRA this 13th day of November 2023 in the government center of the town of Lake Placid, Florida. Please place your phones either on vibrate or off. And we have with us tonight the pleasure of having Father Vincent Clemente with us from the St. James Catholic Church, who's going to lead us in prayer and the invocation and our pledge of allegiance. So if everybody would please rise.
Dear Almighty Father, we honor, we praise you, we glorify you. You have blessed the town of Lake Placid in ways that we will never realize. May we always appreciate the gift you've given us. May we never take for granted what we have that comes from you, the love that you have given us in great abundance. Help us to appreciate your gracious gifts when you guide, when we guide and rule. Your love, wisdom will always be reflected in our deliberation. Bless each of our council members. Guide them to make wise decisions, especially in the most difficult times. Oh Lord, you are the heart of each and everyone here. Help each one to bring out the best within themselves. We all are thankful and appreciative of your many blessings and graces. May we always reflect your glory and your love. We ask this in Jesus' name, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. For which stands my nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Sapp?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
All right. Consent agenda one is the agenda and approval of the CRA minutes, March 13th, 2023.
I move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. All right, seeing none, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, next is additional, oh, yeah. Number two is CRA projects, additional CRA project and reallocation of funds.
Just a reminder for everybody to talk into the mic, since I'm the worst offender, trying to remind myself. So I have passed out to everybody a current CRA project list and proposed CRA project list. There's a couple of changes. Jackson Street is just outside the CRA, so it had to be removed. We inserted South Oak Street, which is right there off of Interlake in front of the mural that needs to be done, so we kind of swapped those two projects. Jackson Street will be done through our general budget, so we already have some money that's identified for repaving. The North Main and Dow Hall intersection, we had about $9,000 in that. You'll notice that's at $60,000 now. In your packet of information, I think it's here, let me get down to it. This was the plan that was, the county had drawn up to redo that intersection, and they have a budget which is right below that. Their budget for that whole project is $140,000, something thousand dollars, $143,000. I had a meeting with J.D. Langford at the county. We talked about doing a, what's called an Emscop, which is a municipal small county outreach program grant, and doing the entire street from Interlake to the Dow Hall intersection in Main. And so that grant application is due in January. We're not going to make this January, so we'll look at next January and doing that whole, taking into account the whole, the whole intersection. So I believe if we can, and I still have to get his approval, so I'm asking for $60,000, not $9,000, to do just the crosswalk. They did one in LaBelle across State Road 80, and it was in the neighborhood of $50,000,[332.22][332.22]$60,000, so I think we can do one less than that. But I did talk to DOT to find out their, their approximate cost on that crosswalk with the lights, the, press the button and the lights light up and that kind of stuff. The area in gray is all repaving, milling and repaving, and the area in green is asphalt that he was intending to remove and put into grass, and there's some sidewalks, so if we can do that as part of the bigger project and redesign the whole street and get public input and council buy-in, that's, I think we can do the temporary project. And so if the council agrees, then, then, then we'll approach that and try and work on just the intersection. I also had to remove the pipe bursting project, which was included in the current CRA projects. There's a conflict in the language. If it's included in our capital improvements project, it can't be moved into the CRA project for three years, so I'll have to come back with a different funding request for that $100,000, probably out of our capital projects fund. So overall, with those changes, we're actually removing the proposed from $211,000 to about $183,000. But that's kind of what we're looking forward to, just, the prices will be when we get there, and then we'll bring those back to the CRA board. But if I could get you to approve the revised project list is actually what I'm looking for today. And up for any questions or discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the proposed CRA projects.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the podium? Okay, hearing none, take it to the audience. All right, seeing none. Clerk, if you'll.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yeah.
Okay, number three is citizens on the agenda. If you have any comments regarding just the CRA, this would be the time to step forward. Okay. All right, seeing none, we'll go to number four, if there's no other business to come before council. I'd ask for adjournment. CR meeting adjourned. I'll now call to order the regular meeting of the Lake Placid Town Council this 13th day of November 2023 at 5:32. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Sapp?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Okay, number one, consent agenda one.
I move to approve consent agenda one.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, there is no consent agenda two. One thing I would like to do, we have down at the bottom, 5D4, appointment of Kimberly Sapp as the alternate special magistrate. She's got some other business to take care of, so I would like to go ahead and move that one up if council would approve. I'll make a motion, we approve Ms. Sapp to be alternate special magistrate.
Second.
Any comments from the podium? Hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
I abstain and have filled out the proper paperwork.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Congratulations, and we look to, we look, we look forward to working with you in the future. Okay. All right, well now go to number three. On the presentations, is there any, there is nothing, is there? I have something here, but it's, has to do with the fire station. Ray, is there anything new with the?
Yes, sir. Did you just ask me what's new with the fire station? Yes, unfortunately, I have to report that they are basically back to scratch on the fire station. It's very unlikely that it'll fit on the piece of property we donated, so they are looking at other sites. They, the earlier administrations of the emergency services group had designed a fire department that, building that was not big enough to hold the equipment that's required here in Lake Placid. So they are having to go back out, redesign a building, figure out what to do, had a meeting, county administrator asked me to come to a meeting, I'm sorry, I lost track of time, 10 days or so ago, met with all those fire folks, met with the new folks that are in charge of capital projects for Highlands County, and they promised to move just as quickly as they can, and it's their major priority, but previous leadership just to design something that was not, wouldn't work. So they have to get it where it'll work, and there's certain equipment, including a ladder truck and all that we need to stay in Lake Placid so our ISO ratings stay good, and so they're going to build, design a bigger, better building that'll hold the equipment we have. They may look at, they're going to look at other sites, they're going to look at potentially the site they're currently at, does it make sense for them to build something new there, or they'll look at other things, and so they're moving forward. But unfortunately, nothing's going to happen short term.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to number four, public hearings. A is the second reading of ordinance 2023-03, Dollar General zoning change from Highlands County B2 to town of Lake Placid, PCD, and creating section 160-18 of the town code entitled Dollar General Plan Commercial Development. Thank you for coming forward.
Good evening, Dana Radel, town planner for the record. I hope everyone's having a wonderful night. So we have two items on the agenda, we're doing them one item at a time. The first one is for the second reading of the zoning change, and the second one will be for the developers agreement. Some of the things we talk about during this first portion of the hearings may have a catalyst effect on the development agreement, so we'll cover those bases, but I just wanted to make sure we were cognizant of that. So the hearing number is LPTC 23.002RZ. This hearing has come before you two other times, so you've seen this presentation, I don't want to bore you too much with the information, but I will go over some things just in case we have anyone that's new to the case in the audience. So the owner is Palmetto Lake Placid Lake Henry LLC. It's approximately 1.73 acres and has an existing zoning of Highlands County B2 Limited Business District. They are proposing a zoning of town of Lake Placid Planned Commercial Development District, which is a requirement of our code because this parcel will be required to be platted when there is plating in the LP RP, a zoning change to planned development is required. You can go ahead and see here on the existing maps, we have the existing future land use of Commercial General, which is compatible with the proposed planned commercial development zoning, and the existing zoning again is Highlands County B2. So the conditions that are proposed with the planned commercial development are, sorry, I'm so distracted. I love the spotlight, so I can't help it. And I'm sorry, I've, I've teetered back on this, on the completion dates, so I will say that I went ahead and I've updated the completion dates in the ordinance to be 18 months to begin construction and 36 months for construction to be complete. After the planning and zoning hearing, there was discussion of shortening these, but I kind of made the executive decision, and you all can change that as you wish, but since we're now definitely requiring plating and they have to engage in that process as well, I wanted to make sure we gave them a reasonable amount of time to get their, their things done. So it's actually 18 months to begin construction, 36 months to complete. There's no underlying zoning district, there's a concept plan.
Can we ask questions as we go, Mr. Mayor? Why, why would we allow anyone, much less a Dollar General store, 18-month construction period? I mean, these are the kinds of things they slap up in a couple of months.
They were comfortable with doing a shorter timeframe at the planning and zoning hearing, it just wasn't a condition of the approval, so.
Okay. I mean, I don't, I mean, I just, I just, if they're going to get started, I just, if, okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
Does, does that have anything to do, does that have anything to do with the plating, time for plating?
Yeah, so I just, yes, they can plot, and they're going to submit their application, they told me later this week, to plat in addition to the commercial review, so they can do it at the same time. I am allowing it to be done concurrently, but I just said, you know, it does, either way, whatever council decides.
I guess my point is, if there's, if they need more time on the front end to start before they turn dirt, I understand that. Once they turn dirt, then we ought to keep that period, we'll give them more than six months, we'll give them a year, but let's, let's make sure they get in there and get it built and get it done. I assume that's what they're going to do anyway, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just came up with the 36 because it was one of the original conditions, but the proposal would be to do 12 months to start and 18 to complete. Sound better?
Does that 18 run, is that 12 months to start plus six months to, means 18 to complete, or is it 12 plus 18 is 30?
So 12 would be, construction starts when they put the shovel in the ground, so the plating and the commercial review process doesn't count as the start date.
Okay, so it's 12 months for the plating and the commercial review process, and then after that is completed, then the 18-month starts, or 36, or whatever we decide, the 18-month starts at that point.
Correct, okay.
No.
Wait, no, I'm sorry.
No.
The 18 months doesn't start, so the moment they move dirt, the 18-month time limit starts for when they need to finish the construction.
Okay.
But from the passage of this zoning tonight, they will have 12 months to put a shovel in the ground.
I see, okay, okay, thank you.
I would, I'd like to suggest for my board members that we give them 18 months for construction commencement and 24 total months for project completion. That gives them a year and a half to get ready, six months to build it. If there's really good reasons it doesn't work, they'll come back and we'll give them an extension, but let's do it that way. And I think I see their representative saying they're comfortable with that, and I think, I see their attorney nodding, so if we could just use 18 and then another six for completion.
So you're saying 18 months, construction begins and six months, construction complete?
Yes, for a total of 24 months.
Right. Makes sense, okay. So continuing on, there's no underlying zoning district proposed, and there's a concept plan included with the ordinance. The uses would be limited to only the retail sales, parking and utilities, and they have established setbacks that would be consistent with what is usually allowed in the C1 district, 30 in the front, 20 on the sides, 20 in the rear, and 15 on the corner. They've limited their height to one story, they're proposing a maximum for area ratio of 50%, which is less than what would have been allowed in the existing zoning. The minimum open space is 25%, which is consistent with the C1 district if they were to use the county C1, I'm sorry, the town C1. The exterior building materials are provided in Exhibit C. I also have a clip, a little excerpt of the building materials, but we did understand that this one was a little harder to look at, so I have a rendering coming up next. We talked about landscaping, they've committed to doing a more intense landscaping plan, but at this time, we don't actually require the full-blown plans, that'll happen during the site plan review process, but we did get them to agree to just more intensification, so that's part of the plan that's in there. There will be a lighting plan required, and they will be required to comply with our parking standards, which is one space for every 300 feet of gross floor area, and they must comply with all local, state and federal requirements for water management. So here we go ahead and show the rendering. It's hard to see from the other drawings that there is a overhang, like a front porch area and entryway, which is required by our code, so they went ahead and provided this to us. This isn't reflective of landscaping, this is really just supposed to be reflective of the exterior building materials. That's why they provided this to us.
I'm sorry, can I, Mr. Mayor? So Dana, the way this representation makes it look like the Dollar General store, will the front, front 27, or is it the front facing to the west?
Technically, the door will be catty-corner on the lot, but they'll have a, the frontage will be on 27 and Lake Henry Drive, so that's what those two, like, that corner's pointing to.
Okay, just, okay. So the back of the building will be towards the homes?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure, thank you.
I have, I have a question, too. Do we have lighting standards? You said you have parking standards, do we have lighting standards?
Our code is a little bit, it could be a little bit stronger, but we do at least have the standard that it says it cannot point toward residential properties, and when we require the lighting plan, that's something I look for. Was there more?
I was looking more for like illumination standards and consistent illumination across the parking lot and foot candles per square foot and things like that. We should maybe follow some international recommendations for that, for public parking to cover, limit our liability and theirs.
Okay, I will go ahead and make a note of that as well, to compare against international recommendations for lighting. And I do know, just for additional information, that our sign code establishes certain requirements in terms of lighting for signs, and it would be really great to have something like that for overall lighting, so I agree.
Yeah, we really need to think about that.
Absolutely. So moving on to intensity, the parcel's 1.73 acres. I mentioned earlier that they've agreed to a floor area ratio of 50%. The existing zoning would allow a floor area ratio of 80%, so this would be a decrease in the total amount of allowable square footage by 22,607 square feet. Potable water will be extended to the site. Tonight, we do need to discuss sanitary sewer and or septic. Solid waste will be provided by the town. There, they have to receive traffic concurrency from the county. There's no impacts to public schools, there's no generation of new students, this is not a residential development. And for the open space, as I mentioned, they're at 25%, so it's actually close to the C1 district, which requires 30. And we did not require a multi-use path, although they will provide a sidewalk on US 27 and Lake Henry. A multi-use path was not required because our code specifically requires them on collector roads, and this is on an arterial, which is something I do think we should revisit because we have very few collector roads in the town. In terms of department comments, we, there were very few comments, there were no objections, some did not offer a response. The only comment that was offered is that it was approved with conditions, at the time of development, the applicant will undergo the development review process, and additional requirements may be identified at that time, which is what they're going through now. On July 5th, the local planning agency voted to forward the proposed official zoning map amendment and LDR text amendments to the town council with the recommendation of approval, and they did recommend changes. The applicant has addressed all of these changes. I, in the back of my presentation, we can go through each one of them if necessary, but I did provide in the packets, like a track changes showing the differences of what happened between the local planning agency meeting and today's town council meeting. What's really important is that we have read the ordinance for tonight and make sure that we're in agreement with it. On August 14th, we tabled the first reading. On August 9th, the town council voted to approve ordinance 2023-03 on first reading, and we're back tonight with most motion options available on the screen. Again, I'm the town planner, the applicant is here for any questions, and I will turn it back over to council.
Mr. Mayor, for my, Mr. I, I perceive, or I guess I've been told, that you, that you all have collectively, staff and them have collectively taken care of what I'm going to call the transportation part of that, the easement, the maintenance of the easement, talking with the overall property owner about how you're going to handle that. That's all been settled to yours and Mr. Harris's and their satisfaction?
I'm satisfied, and I know Mr. Harris isn't here, but McGregor's been speaking with him, so between the two of you.
That may be a good segue into my introduction, so good evening, McGregor, love. 215 North Iola Drive, Orlando, Florida. The last time I was before you, I was just meeting Mr. Harris and all of you, and we discovered there were some items that we needed to work through, and we, we promised to do that, and we did. I'm, I'm disappointed in that, that Bert couldn't be here today because we got to know each other, each other quite well, as I got to know you, Dana. So I appreciate the town staff by whom you are very well-served. And to your question, I will say that Bert and I walked, Mr. Harris and I, we walked through that easement, that was the first item that we sort of tackled, and we agreed in, in, in really all practical form on the, the outlines of the easement. As we were getting ready for first reading, and we discussed the next phase of this, which is of course subdivision plating, we really thought about it from a practical perspective, given that there's another property owner that will be part of that subdivision process, necessarily shouldn't be involved in what it, what will be the easement area. That's why in your current packet in the ordinance and in the DA tonight, you'll see that we referenced the requirement that there be that easement, and there's even the requirement of how wide it will be, but we don't specifically include it as an exhibit or require it to be recorded right now. We wanted you to know that we're not at all trying to get away from it, and that we've agreed in, in form on what it will look like. We just want the other owner to be here present before you when we finally put that into effect.
Well, thank you, I guess that's what I've sort of been told. What's the mechanism, though, if we do second, prove it, this is second reading, zoning change and the developers agreement? What's the legal mechanism to enforce the final outcome of that if we approve a developers agreement? I mean, in other words, is there any other bite at the apple for us?
The plat will come back before council. A final plat must be approved by council.
Okay, okay, thank you. Just want to make sure there was, there was a mechanism somewhere to say, we're all doing what we said we were going to do.
Yes, sir.
As you said you would, to your credit.
Yes, sir.
Several months ago.
And, and that's why Bert and I both agreed, like, listen, you will see this again, and that easement will not only have to match what we put in the DA and the ordinance, or else it'll be inconsistent with that, but we'll, we'll have to get it approved in, in full form.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Obviously, the next question is the big question of the evening, and that is, you know, what are we going to do in regards to septic or sewer? And I guess my first question, you just alluded to the fact that there is an adjoining subdivision, and I'm just curious, has there been conversation with the other property owner that you just referenced? As my understanding, you're having to replat this, and I, I certainly understand the cost implications of why your client doesn't want to bear the total costs of running a sewer pipe down there. of why your client doesn't wanna bear the total costs of running a sewer pipe down there. But I'm just wondering, has there been conversations with the other client to see whether or not, either through a pioneering agreement or with, with them being involved from the initial out, outset of this to putting that line in so that that line benefits all of the properties along that extension? Has there been a conversation with the other property?
Candidly, I, I don't know the answer to that. What I'll say is that, my understanding is that the owner of that parent tract doesn't have any current plans for developing.
Okay.
And that the subdivision was really a requirement that is just triggered by your town code. When you, you can't, um, split a, a lot out, uh, for a third time, essentially. So when this lot was created by deed, it really just triggered the requirement that the parent owner had to come back for the plating process. Thankfully, they're agreeable to that. But there's no current plan to develop, so I'm not sure if there would be an incentive to participate.
I, I guess I just wanna make sure from your all's standpoint that if we approve this, and let's just say we approve it contingent upon an advanced septic system being put in, I would just hate to see you all spend twenty, twenty-plus thousand dollars, and then a sewer pipe come by a couple of years from now, and you say, wow, that was a big waste of twenty thousand dollars.
And, and we can get into that, and that's really the main issue in the DA, but if it's, if it's, uh, council's pleasure, I can talk about it now. It's sort of an awkward one-two to have to vote on one without hearing about the other, given that that's sort of what we're here to discuss. So I'm happy to, to jump into the, the sewer-septic issue.
Yes, if we could, go ahead and jump into it just because right now in the ordinance for the zoning, it says the applicant shall provide onsite septic. So if council makes a different decision, then we would need to go back and fix the zoning too. So let's go ahead, and if you don't mind.
And, and I guess probably I'm leaning towards being willing to accept onsite septic if they're utilizing a certain system, given they're in the immediate, you know, um, watershed of Lake Henry, which makes them within the watershed of Lake June. And we're taking, we're spending tens of millions of dollars. And so it seems that if, if, if they're going to use septic, even with the size of their lot, that, um, we should require at least an advanced system to be placed in there.
And, and I'll walk through all those, those options. So just moving, if you were to flip to your, uh, your agenda for the next item, you'll see that, uh, Dana and Bert have laid out two options. And the way that I look at it, uh, there are really kind of three options. One option, as it relates to the DA, is not to include language for, um, wastewater treatment at all. That's not to say that we don't have to treat wastewater and that we don't have to put anything in there in the ground at all. It's just to say that what they'll be required to do is exactly what your town code requires them to do, which is a septic, onsite septic treatment and mandatory connection if you are within sixty feet of a sewer line. That's what your code requires right now. That's what I discussed with Bert. Um, he agreed that it should be removed from the DA and that we should have this as a, a separate discussion. The two options that he put here are, you know, the first option is really an, what I will call over and above code. Um, and, and we've talked about this. It's not, this language in particular, I will say, has not been around for all that long in our discussions. But, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't able to, uh, talk at length with Bert about it today, but I have talked to the applicant and my client. So this is the advanced, uh, septic system. And so the, the current quote that, uh, we have for standard septic on the property is, is, is to around twenty-five thousand dollars. This might be twice that cost to, to put an advanced system in. And, uh, but we also recognize, as you said, this is an issue that is of concern for the town. It's not reflected in your land development code right now. But we understand that it is something that is concerning to you and, and something that you, you wanna do right by your citizens, uh, on this issue. Uh, and, and the applicant would be agreeable to that option one, the advanced septic system.
Okay, thank you. So if I'm, I mean, Dana, I guess I perceived over the last four or five months, these were the two, the easement and, and how we were in treat wastewater were the big two issues and were the primary issues. You're gonna ask us to approve the zoning first and then a developer's agreement, correct?
Correct.
And the advanced wastewater treatment system is part language is in the developer's agreement, correct?
That's correct.
And if we're all nodding up and down and, and we think we have an agreement, we can approve zoning, go to the developer's agreement, and then if all of a sudden the tune changes, we can revisit the zoning, correct?
Yes, as long as we're in the same, we'd have to reopen it and everything, but we can do that.
Okay, well, my questions are over. Thank you.
Uh, so just as a reminder, that if a motion is made and council wants to offer approval, um, it would be approval with changes because we're changing the dates that are currently in the ordinance.
I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three with changes, eighteen to twenty-four months, and the ATU, if that needs to apply now.
ATU, the advanced wastewater system?
Yes.
Dana, could I, could I, uh, make a suggestion that might help? The awkward way that we have to approve these. If we add a sentence that just says wastewater as outlined in the developer's agreement between the developer and the city, I think that will naturally tie in whatever happens next, uh, to this approval.
Oh, yes, we can pass that to the next ordinance. I, I agree.
Thank you.
I move to approve twenty twenty-three with changes of eighteen and twenty-four months on the start and completion dates.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any other comments from the podium? All right, hearing none. We'll take it to the audience. All right, seeing none. Bring her back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we're going to second reading on the developer's agreement.
So, um, this is our development agreement for Dollar General. And developers' agreements really just encourage a stronger commitment to our plan, and they can be helpful because they can narrow down information that isn't necessarily fit for zoning. Those little details and development agreements are a little bit easier to amend if for some reason, an amendment had to occur. So it's nice to approach developments in these twofold kind of transactions to really ensure the town of Lake Placid is really, and the applicant are really receiving entitlements on both ends. So the developer's agreement, for the most part, reflects zoning, and they've established language for the easement that everyone seems comfortable with. But the last topic, again, is just the water treatment services, how it will be done. And it sounds like the applicant is willing to follow through with an advanced water treatment septic system. But we'll go ahead and turn it back over to council for any discussion regarding those matters.
I'd like to ask about the painting of the buildings and maintenance of the buildings. I know we've talked about this in the past, but I don't know where it was left. Dollar Generals are fine, but it seems like after three to five years, the paint falls off, the building turns black, and no one seems to care. Is there something the town can do to make sure the building stays attractive?
So we have the requirement in our code that they would be held to regardless of our minimum maintenance standards, which prohibits mildew, um, requ, doesn't necessarily require that the building be all one color or that it be painted. We could add language about keeping it painted and things like that. But we do have a code that can enforce those things. And our new code enforcement office has successfully enforced it on several new properties.
It's subjective, I would think. Uh, look at the Dollar General and Josephine Drive there, and it's a nightmare. Landscaping's a disaster. The building's turning black, and no one seems to care. I don't want that to happen here in Lake Placid, so.
I will say, in September, I visited City of Sebring Code Enforcement, and at that hearing, they were taking both Dollar Generals that they have, um, for the mildew and, and things like that. From what I understand, Dollar General is willing to come into compliance, but they still made it to special magistrate. So I do see that as being a pattern that we've seen throughout Highlands County. And the only way is to really address it through code enforcement, and we have to give due process. So sometimes it is a bit of a process, but if we notice mildew or anything like that on the building, or if anyone reports it, a hundred percent, we will follow through with, um, compliance.
I just have a sense that Dollar General is gracious and willing to do anything right now, but a couple of years from now, they're gonna forget about it, not care, and we can't reach back and do anything about it at that point. I don't wanna see that happen.
Absolutely.
I don't have a, I don't have a lot of faith in them to maintain their building. I wanna make sure we can do something about it. It sounds like we can, but we have to work through the process to do it.
I mean, we could go back into the zoning and make the same requirement, but like you said, we have to go back through the process. It would be the same code enforcement process. You know, there's nothing I could really take away from them aside from fining and putting on liens and things like that.
So is it gonna happen or not? Would we be able to stop them if they don't maintain their building?
Oh, a hundred percent.
Good, that's all I need to hear. That's all I need to hear. I'm, I'm, I'm good then.
Dana's gonna notice. Cheryl's gonna notice. No, for sure.
I guess I still have a, uh, and I guess this would be in the developer's agreement. I still have a little concern about lighting because sometimes, and especially being right on twenty-seven, um, the consistency of the lighting across the parking lot really contributes to the safety of the people that are gonna utilize that facility. And in addition, I, I would like to make sure that that lighting doesn't bleed onto twenty-seven and cause a safety issue on twenty-seven. So the recommended standard that I'm familiar with is five foot candles per square foot on the property, uh, average overall, and something to that effect. And LED lighting is, is better now for color rendition. And also certain fixtures that you would use that would cause the lighting to be directed down instead of out. So, um, you don't have to be that specific, but that's the type of thing that I'm looking at, that I wanna make sure that, uh, we have some standards for you to follow, some direction. And it's out there. We could just pull it up from, from the internet. But there are standards for that.
If the applicant is in agreement, we can add a condition to the development agreement that a lighting plan shall be provided showing lighting not to exceed five candles per square foot, including, or to require, to require LED lighting and to direct lighting down instead of out. I think that, that's language we can add in there, absolutely.
And, and I spoke with my client. We're, we're agreeable to that.
So just two things. I move to approve LPTC twenty-three dot zero zero two DA with the lighting change and the requirement of the ATU septic system.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any other comments from the podium? Hearing none. We'll take it to the audience. All right, seeing none. Bring her back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right, next is C, first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, budget amendment FY two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three.
Mayor, the, um, council, the budget amendment is actually increasing the budget by seven hundred and twenty thousand. And this is for the period of ten-one twenty-two to nine-thirty of this year, twenty-three. And on the, the item I have listed, the major factors, it was for the utility projects. And more so of the sewer-to-septic project is what contributed to seven hundred and twenty thousand.
Right, if I might, if I look at this, basically, general fund budget kinda went down. In other words, we, we saved more than we anticipated spending. The reason there's a large increase in the budget is the utility expense, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood the numbers. I'll make a motion. We approve and adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Second. First reading of twenty twenty-three eleven. I'm sorry, yeah. So I take out the adopt. I make a motion that we approve on first reading. Ordinance number twenty twenty-three eleven. I apologize.
You have my amended second.
Thank you. All right, any, any other comments from the podium? All right, hearing none. We'll take it to the audience. Okay, seeing none. Bring her back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
All right, under D, we have Lake Placid High School soccer public event signs. Uh, the permit number is P E P twenty-three dash oh three. And we do have a conceptual picture of what they want. Basically, the same thing that they have for football and, and baseball that they put around the, uh, around Devane Park. And just for clarification, especially since the sign says tonight, these would be signs that would be put up first thing in the morning, come down. I mean, I guess I didn't really read it correctly.
Exhibit A gives you the schedule.
The applicant is requesting to put them up the day before. I think the night before, so they'll be up for twenty-four hours.
Okay, and I guess I, I apologize, I didn't see that. But why would you put a sign up the day before when it says soccer tonight?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. They actually are putting it up the day of and taking it down by the morning after.
Okay. So they'll put them up the morning of the game, someone will go collect them the next morning. Okay. That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Me too. I, I was on the same page with you on that one.
And they're only requesting eight signs. Okay.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any comments from the podium? Hearing none. We'll take it to the audience. Okay, seeing none. Bring her back. Pull the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, the last thing on, under public hearings is E, resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, lien reduction request for two thirty-one Heartland Boulevard.
Thank you. So I went ahead and I, I think I prepared a pretty good timeline as best I could with this statement of issue. So I'm gonna go ahead and just read it off to you guys. But tonight, we have Jake Tucker here on behalf of his parents, who own two thirty-one Heartland Boulevard in Lake Placid. Jake has requested a lien reduction for the code enforcement lien that was imposed for high grass. The case was opened on July twenty-first, twenty-eleven, and heard by the special magistrate on November nineteenth, twenty-eleven. Fines and fees were imposed at twenty-five dollars just for a fine, twenty-five dollars for the administrative hearing fee, and twenty-five dollars for the prosecution fee. As part of the order, they said, okay, these are our fees. And then if you do not come into compliance by December twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, we will also impose a daily fine of twenty-five dollars a day. So daily fines have accrued on the property. And as Jake got involved and we informed him that if you go ahead and mow the grass, the fines can stop. So he went ahead and did come into compliance on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. By that time, the total lien amounted to a hundred and eight thousand dollars and eight, I'm sorry, a hundred and eight thousand eight hundred dollars. The property appraiser has listed the assessed value of the property at twenty-four thousand three hundred dollars. And the special magistrate issued a recommendation to allow a reduction resulting in less than ten percent of the existing balance as of the date of the special magistrate meeting on October twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. That would have been a hundred and eight thousand seven hundred dollars. It increased a hundred dollars because for four more days, he had the twenty-five dollar accruing fine. And then, you know, four days after, he mowed the grass, so we were able to stop it. And it was with the condition that the property be sold. And it was with the condition that the property be sold to a party, a third party in an arms-length transaction, and specifically talking to our special magistrate, you know. That is because the purpose of this is to make the lot sellable and marketable, because we want people to be able to develop on these lots. So his recommendation was to, you know, go ahead and accept a lien reduction so that we can go ahead and potentially get some construction on the lot and put it back on our tax roll. So the applicant has initially proposed to settle the cost of the lien for the original cost of fines and fees at seventy-five dollars. And after the special magistrate made his recommendation, the special magistrate said, okay, after I make my recommendation, go ahead and write a letter of response. So he did, and in that letter, he said, let's just go ahead and come to a consensus, a reasonable compromise that we can, we can find. So my recommendation as staff is to approve a lien reduction and accept the original cost of the fines for a total of seventy-five dollars, contingent upon the property being sold in an arms-length transaction.
You know, I have a real problem with this. They've had twelve years to settle this. And it amounts to almost a hundred and nine thousand dollars. And now he wants us to settle for seventy-five because he wants to sell the property? I don't know, I don't know about council, but I think he needs to step up and indicate that he's had a problem here and that I think we need to negotiate a higher fee than just seventy-five dollars. That's, you know, if it had just been a year or so, I could see it, but waiting twelve, thirteen years, yeah, I just got a problem with it. I don't know about the rest of council things, but. Well, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, certainly agree with you in principle. I had a conversation with Dana earlier today about this, just to make sure I understood it. And my understanding is there's, there's multiple factors involved with this as we move forward and that while there's certainly fault on Mr. Tucker's family, we probably, in regards to code enforcement, weren't following through, and we weren't doing certain things as well. And so, I mean, I think we bear a little bit of responsibility as far as continuing to notify people that there's ongoing things. And so I don't, I don't disagree with you at all in principle, but I think this is, has to be a learning lesson for us as we move forward in that, how we handle things and we're able to document when people were notified and how things were going. And so, I mean, I, I don't know, and Dana did not say this to me, but I think it's, if we just did something twelve years ago and we haven't said anything to anyone in twelve years, other than the meter continues to run. Now, if we've been continually in communication and I'm missing the point, to the mayor's point, then, then I would agree with him.
I think all of that, and my, I a hundred, that is my thought process most of the time, a hundred percent, because we have invested time, energy, staff resources, all of these things, and it has gone on for a long period of time. I think one of the overarching issues is that generally, we would not apply a daily fine for mowing, and I think that's what it kinda, where it kinda gets me. It should have been, my opinion, that and it might have been a budget issue at the time, I do not know. I don't know what happened however many years ago. But when you take it to special magistrate, if someone doesn't come into compliance for high grass, that's something that generally we could hire someone to fix. We hire them and then we say, it cost us five hundred dollars to mow your lot, so you're responsible for the hearing fee, the administration fee, plus five hundred dollars to mow your lot. It's a one-time fee, and then they come back and eventually they pay it. If they don't pay it, then it's a lien on their property, and it sits at that rate for all those years, instead of accruing the daily fines. So I didn't necessarily find too much value in adding a daily fine for the grass. That was part of it.
I have a lot in town, and I'm required to mow it, and it cost me about a hundred fifty dollars a month to mow that lot. They got away with that for twelve years. At a hundred dollars a month, that's fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars, which is two-thirds of what I've had to pay to maintain my property. It frustrates me to just give this away. If they knew about it and they had the opportunity, they should have mowed it. We've had to look at it and deal with it for twelve years, which falls kind of in between where Ray is and the mayor is. I feel like there has to be some kind of penalty. I don't mind following your recommendation, but I don't think it's fair to those of us who have maintained our property the whole time they've been not.
Takes the teeth out of the whole code itself. The twenty-five dollars accrued daily, is that also applied in code for minimum maintenance standards that aren't brought up? It's the same exact dollar value per day?
The special magistrate determines the dollar value per day, so it could be more.
It could be more, okay.
If I may say something as well, unless you wanna go as well. Good afternoon, I'm Jake, I'm here on behalf of my parents, as you guys know. Thank you for having me. It goes back to, as we do accept responsibility, I'm not making any excuses. I'm here just to say, I talked to them, and within their best knowledge, they don't recall ever seeing a notice. As I've talked to Dana about it, we do know there was one sent back in two thousand and eleven. But since then, there was never a single notice sent after that. So they didn't know that, they asked me to take care of this, and I just found out about it a few months ago, because we were trying to sell it, that you also pay back property taxes, so we can pay all that back. And as she said, I got it mowed that about two weeks ago, it's completely mowed now. If, if there was something sent in the mail even yearly, I, I would like to promise you, we would have got it at least mowed, because that's not that big of a deal. But as I know, the only notification was in two thousand and eleven, and nothing else after that.
So your lot is the one on the south side of Heartland Boulevard that's mowed? The one place I see the mowed spot as I go by, okay.
Yes, that one property, that one.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to make a comment. So we have a new code enforcement officer, obviously a new planner, started pulling records and saw that we have a number of lots that, along Heartland, two or three of which have daily fines, some of other which have a hundred dollar fine that was set and never, there was not a consistency there in that. We have other lots in town that have been noticed over and over, and they treat them, I think there's a different treatment there than this, that is, you drive down on the other side of the railroad tracks along Heartland Boulevard, nothing has been mowed anywhere between there and Tangerine. So, but we're trying to clean up these old fines that don't make any sense. The twenty thousand dollar property and a hundred and eight thousand dollar fine, that was part of the reason I brought to you the question about the house that we're gonna pursue the code enforcement action on and lien and foreclosing on the lien and the other issues. We're trying to clean them up and get to a procedure that makes sense. And this one, along with two or three others, no, the other applicants haven't come forward. They probably are in the same boat, they don't know they have daily accumulating fines, because whatever happened twelve years ago, we didn't know about. And there was a failure in time, probably, personnel changes, and then it dropped through the cracks. And so we're trying to clean them up, and that's just so you know where it's at and what it is. We're just trying to get these cleaned up into something that, that's logical and we follow the process.
So my question is, do we know, Mr. Tucker, when did you receive the notice that you had a problem in Lake Placid? Do we know, Dana, for instance, that what was owed at that time, when you did receive that first notice?
We found out, the, so I found out through a title company, actually, because the contracted person's already set, and they're just doing a title search, and that's when they came back and said.
But you received one notice, you said, you received.
My parents did in two thousand and eleven, I think, and then they, they don't recall ever getting it, I mean, it was twelve years ago, so I can't exactly blame them, but they are taking responsibility, they understand, they probably did. We know it was certified mail, so they did. But after that, we, they never got a single one reminding them. We've gotten the property taxes every year, a reminder of that, but never one after that saying, hey, you have a hundred thousand dollar lien on a twenty-four thousand dollar property.
Could it be determined how much was owed at the time that that, that that one mailing was received?
The mailing that they received, that we have a signature for, was just for notification of the special magistrate hearing before the fine was imposed. We got the letter back after the fine was recorded. So in our file, we show, you know, the mail came back to us without being signed. We opened the mail and we saw on there the fine, the special magistrate fine. So I don't know how much effort was given after that to let them know that a fine was imposed on their property. And it all went to the same address, so one, one got signed, and then we have multiple pieces of mail that came back unsigned.
Have your parents had maintained the same mailing address since two thousand and eleven?
Yes, sir.
I find it odd.
But they came back, right?
Not signed.
Not signed, right, they came back, not signed, yeah. One came signed and two unsigned.
I have a hard time with this. I'm not sure how I'll vote or what I think to do going forwards. If we go back to the original price, and we have several properties in the same situation, can we start today the correct process for getting this dealt with moving forwards? This isn't the only property, how many do you think we have in this situation as a town?
Right now, there's about three grass lots accruing daily fines that I know of on Heartland, and if council is okay with it, I think staff would be happy to bring those back to kind of reevaluate those liens and move forward from there.
I am extremely frustrated by this, I'm sure a lot of people are. Especially because I've maintained mine and I've dealt with it, 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 it's a sticking point for me. I don't like it. But it sounds like we probably need to follow your recommendation on this and get this straightened out and not have this problem going forwards. So I move that we approve the lien reduction to accept the original cost of the fines of seventy-five dollars, very reluctantly.
I, I agree with Councilman Sap in that I have a concern about setting a dangerous precedent by doing this. However, with that, with that said, I would second that.
Okay, we got a motion, a second from the, any more comments from the podium? All right, hearing none, we'll take it to the audience. Bring it back. All right, one thing I wanna say is, we now have a code enforcement officer that's doing a very good job, and I wanna see some teeth put into this. This is, this, to me, now, I know for years, we didn't have a code enforcement officer, so this has slipped through the cracks, but I want those cracks sealed up.
Me too, we're, we're working on it, and Bert and Cheryl and I are working on a whole new code enforcement section of the code. So I agree, and thank you for that compliment with Cheryl, she's doing a great job.
Okay, go ahead and poll the council.
Councilmember Sap?
A very reluctant yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, with contingencies.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members.
We don't have our attorney here tonight, he had to be excused due to illness. I hope everything's okay, and we see him back here shortly. This time.
I'll take one if you want.
Oh. Yeah, I don't have it on here. All right, go ahead, oh, here it is, down below. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So this is the FDEP grant loan agreement between us and the Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center. There was language issue on the bond, the bond's been filed, everything's ready to go. Just had to get language agreement between DEP and us, actually. So we're gonna ask that you approve the amended grant loan, FDEP grant loan agreement. And we have the resolution?
The resolution was passed out to everyone.
I'll make a motion, we approve Lake Placid Town Council Resolution number twenty-twenty-three dash eighteen.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any comments from the podium? Hearing none, take it to the audience. Bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sap?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
And just a real quick update, the contractor has submitted their documentation for the pumps and the panels and that kind of stuff. It's had our engineers getting reviewed, so once that's done, then they'll schedule and start construction on that piece of it. We're working on bid documents and permits for the water line portion of it. That has to be submitted for a grant application before December fifteenth, so we're trying to get that done this week or next week, so we'll be complete, and Baracko and Associates will have that on for the water line. So that whole project's moving forward and, and we'll seek construction in the relatively near future.
Very good. Okay, now we'll go to town administrator, he's got four items.
First one is the Christmas parade request, fee waiver and approval. So just for information, I know this is an annual event. We did provide all the costs, so you know what you're, what you're waiving, what the total, total amounts are. We do this every year, just so you have, so you have the information.
Kevin, I'm just curious, I mean, I know that on the Saturday night, the police are obviously working overtime, but when we use public works employees, do we bring them in on Sunday, or do we wait till Monday, when they're like on regular schedule to clean up?
I guess that would be up to the council, if you wanna leave the trash sitting around for a day or not.
It would be easier to do on Sunday, because there aren't cars in the way and people running all over. I think it'd be worth a little more to.
Okay.
Pay extra to have it done.
If I'm correct, they actually had a street sweeper come in last couple of years.
And they do, that's eight hundred and sixty-six dollars of that part of the fee waiver. They have a street sweeper come in and sweep the town inner lake.
It's probably not that much money for the work it does. I move that we waive the fees for the Christmas parade request.
Second.
All right, got a motion, a second, any other comments from the podium? Hearing none, audience? Poll the council.
Councilmember Sap?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
And listen, no talking from the back of the room.
Next item is the Lake Placid Chamber Christmas mixer request for road closure and fee waiver.
I move to approve the Lake Placid Chamber Christmas mixer request for the road closure and fee waiver.
A second.
We got a motion, a second, any other comments from the podium? I have just one comment. I hope in the future that we get going on our, our park street, or what, I'm sorry, I lost track, the Street, Stewart Street, because this is the kind of thing that long-term, we need to have a very designated area to have events just like this, and then we wouldn't have to be closing streets and waiving fees. So, but I'm gonna vote yes, but we need to move forward on our Stewart Street plans, thank you. Okay. Yeah, but Stewart Street's north, is west of Stewart Park, yes. Take it to the audience? Seeing none, bring it back, poll the council.
Councilmember Sap?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
All right, D three, additional items on the police station design?
So as we were getting into discussions on the police department, and they were doing the survey, in order for us to, we made some changes, flipped flop the garage door back over on the side, so they made those changes, but the big change is we surveyed the entire property, all the trees on the property, we plan on updating our landscape plan so that we can come into compliance with our own code. We've also requested, since we're requiring this of other people, that we put a grinder pump in, we'll have to directional bore under twenty-seven to get to our Vista lift station, but we won't be putting a septic tank in here. So we will be directional bore, and so there's cost associated with that design, and that's the total of a change order for Cool and Cobb for twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. It'll come out of the ARPA funds.
I move to approve five D three police station design for additional items.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, any other comment from the podium? Seeing none, we'll take it to the audience. All right, hearing none, bring it back, poll the council. Poll the council.
Councilmember Sapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
And that's all I have.
Okay. All right, this time I'll take it to my department heads. Anybody, any of you have anything you want to bring before council?
Just regarding the Christmas parade, we have roughly four or five employees that come in during that time, work about 10 hours that day, aiding in the setting up of the barricades, road closures, anything that the police need as far as extra cones and things. We try to help with the lineup of the parade and then after the event, we take backpack blowers and go all up and down interlake to blow all the garbage to the center for the street sweeper to collect.
Okay. Thank you. I want to thank Alan and his crew for the Christmas decorations. They're still putting them up. I think we still got a ways to go, but they, they always make our town look very nice. And just want you to thank your crew for the, for the, for the town. Okay. All right, this time I'll bring it back to the podium. We'll start down here.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, first of all, thank those of you on the council and others that have served in the military since we're just a few days removed from Veterans Day and those people in our community for your service. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving as we approach the holiday season and we'll see everyone in December.
I echo Councilman Royce's thoughts as far as the military service and a happy Thanksgiving. And strangely enough, I don't think I have anything else.
Charlie?
Good.
Okay.
Nothing to add.
All right. At this time, we have a couple of citizens who want to speak. Colleen Charles.
Thank you. Colleen Charles, 522 Sunset Point Drive. And I would just like to comment how beautiful the Christmas decorations are at town. I mean, just stunning. So nice job there. My discussion today might take a little over three minutes, but I have a few people that'll defer their time to me if, if need be, and I would hope you would honor that. So I wanted to follow up on previous discussions related to our septic systems causing water quality issues and how that's being used as the main reason to apply for federal and state grant monies to replace our septic systems with a centralized sewer system. Additionally, there are many concerns on the current location of the new 1 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant. I'm not certain how many of you are familiar with Florida Lake Watch, which is a citizen volunteer lake monitoring program that facilitates hands-on citizen participation in the management of the Florida lakes, estuaries, rivers and springs throughout monthly monitoring activities. Area volunteers take monthly water samples. It is coordinated through the University of Florida's Institute of Food and Agricultural Services, Fisheries and Aquatic Services Science Department, and the program has been in existence since 1986. In 1991, the Florida Legislature recognized the importance of the program and established Florida Lake Watch in the state statutes. Lake Watch is now one of the largest lake monitoring programs in the nation with over 1,800 trained citizens currently monitoring 525 lakes, 175 estuary stations, 125 river stations, 20 coastal dune lakes and 10 spring runs in 57 counties. The information compiled from the water samplings is used to create a long-term database that serves as documentation of current chemistry conditions to be compared with future water chemistry conditions. We have reviewed the data for Lake June, Lake Placid, Lake Henry and Catfish Creek. Lake June and Lake Placid have been tested for over 30 years. Lake Henry, almost 30 years, and Catfish Creek, over 20 years. All are within the acceptable limits of DEP natural occurring boundaries except for an outlined year that he explained. Nowhere in the data, it indicates that septic systems are impacting lake quality. Four tests are performed: total phosphorus, nitrogen, chlorophyll and seki. Dr. Daniel Canfield is the founder of Florida Lake Watch. He is a professor in limnology at the University of Florida and his specialty is applied research that directly relates to the management of aquatic ecosystems. We set up a Zoom call with him, which was extremely informative. We also understand that he had a call from our town attorney. Question to you, Mr. Mayor. If you or other council members or our town administrator were briefed on that phone call discussion?
Do what?
Anybody, were you, we had a call with Dr. Canfield, who indicated he had also had a call from the town attorney. So we're curious if anybody was briefed on the results of that phone call.
I have no idea about the town attorney, but I had a over an hour, almost an hour and 30 minute phone call with Dr. Canfield. So I don't know if he got confused about attorney versus administrator.
No, he did not.
Okay.
He did not.
So I talked to him for well over, well over an hour.
So Mayor, you did not? Mr. Royce?
I've not spoke to, spoke to Dr. Canfield.
No, but were you briefed on our town attorney's conversation?
No.
With Dr. Canfield?
No.
Councilman Hayes?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Sapp?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
So I ask this because we found Dr. Canfield's expertise, experience and research very informative and further contradictory to the main reason to pursue the septic to sewer or save the lakes project. The continuous communication over and over to the public has been that septic systems are polluting the lakes and is most recent included in the new grant request approved at the September 11th town council meeting. However, there is no empirical evidence to support these statements. I'd just like to quickly outline seven of the top key learnings from Dr. Canfield during our call. Number one, the state requires fecal chlorophyll tests, but that does not detect septic leakage. Would need to have an E. coli test that is not required by the state. If your septic tanks don't smell, they are working. If they smell, you should find the problem, not replace all the tanks. Two, the age of wastewater plants and collection pipes could be problematic. Wastewater dissolves concrete over time, which could be part of the problem. Three, Florida rainfalls contribute to excessive stormwater runoffs into the lakes and excessive water for the sewage treatment plants. Further, stormwater can contain nitrogen and phosphorus pollutants from fertilizers, pet and yard waste. The problem with the town's plan to add more wastewater reuse lines for irrigation on US 27 is that during Florida rainy season, both will be adding water to the ground and storm drains, which adds more phosphorus to the lakes or the sewage plant ponds would overflow. The current location of the existing wastewater plant is too close to Lake June and not ideally located at the highest point in town and also in a residential area. It could also be contributing to water quality. Smells are problematic and it, you can't really get rid of them in a sewage plant. The main point he noted is we need to define the problem. It is not septic systems polluting the lakes. It's that sewer is needed for future growth and a wastewater plant is the solution. So the lake issues are being used as justification for DEP to provide grant monies. Dr. Canfield said he would make himself available for a Zoom call to share his expertise and to answer any questions you or the public would have, and we recommend to take him up on that offer, possibly at the special town hall meeting that we're still waiting to be set up. He is an independent, highly qualified and respected individual in this field. Or if you prefer, we would be happy to set up that Zoom meeting. This will help better educate the public on what the science regarding our lakes shows and the trends over the years from their continuous water testing. There is nothing to lose to have Dr. Canfield share his decades of experience and he is available at no cost. We believe this will allow our elected officials to make the best decision for all the impacted parties. In the end, the best decision for the town of Lake Placid, if, if in the end, the best decision would be to build a new 1 million gallons per day sewage plant to allow future growth of our town and surrounding areas, then let's be honest on the reason and allow the people that are impacted by this planned growth to give their feedback versus mandating people to destroy perfectly fine septic systems that are not contributing to lake quality issues. Additionally, the new wastewater treatment plant should not be built in a rural or industrial area, not in close proximity to residential homes in our lakes, nor the highest elevation of the area. Thank you for allowing me this time to share this crucial information and I welcome your comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And if you want to submit that.
Okay. I'll email it to you.
Yeah, for our review, I'd appreciate it.
I appreciate it. And what I'd also like to send that if she could forward on is there's some very interesting research paper that Mr. Canfield completed that I think would be of great interest and also some Lake Watch information and the website for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Joy Eberhart. Oh, so you just, okay. All right, is there any other business to come before town council?
Hello, my name is Pam Fincher. I'm a resident of the greater Lake Placid area. Just to follow up on some of your comments, most you know, I was on the SWIFTMUD governing board, PISR Basin Board Chair, was on the Lake Placid Water Advisory Committee, Highlands Soil and Water Board Directors. The Florida Lake Watch is a volunteer organization. Thank God for them. I mean, they go out and sample, but it's volunteer. If you want to have real samples of the water, you've got to go to SWIFTMUD and other organizations. There are official documentations. I hate to say it, but the Lake, Lake Placid is an impaired body water. Bert said it in a meeting a couple, 18 months ago. I didn't believe him. I went to the SWIFTMUD documentation, contacted staff. It is an impaired body of water now. The lakes in our area are degraded. We can, you can say this house did it, this house didn't. It is the septic tanks. Go to DEP. We know what the rules are. House Rule 1379. We're in the Okeechobee map. I do not think the town of Lake Placid is trying to use this $40 million grant for growth. I've been coming to these meetings 20 or 30 years. In my opinion, one of the last things the town wants is growth. So they're not using this as a vehicle to grow the town. This is for the lakes. This is a way to come into compliance. This is a regulatory issue and I'm not going to convince you all, I don't think, but I just want to let you know that they're in just one report from SWIFTMUD. There are hundreds of reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Couple of quick comments. I said I have a slightly different take from my conversation with Dr. Canfield, but that's fine. He's, he's one opinion. And there is a specific research paper done on Lake June, which is posted on our website. So about where it's at. And not only Lake Placid, but Lake June has also now been designated as an impaired water body. So that's not one person's opinion. It's DEP that's determined that, just as a note. The other note on the capacity of the wastewater plant, the 1MGD plant, over 80% of that is not for future growth. That is future growth of getting septic tanks off of the lakes. And those are only the initial projects. Those aren't all the septic tanks in the area, but it's not being designed for future growth. It's being designed for septic to sewer conversions. So it has nothing to do with future growth or development in, in the Lake Placid area. So there are, just as a note, I don't have the dates, but that will be going out on the website. I got, had a voicemail earlier from Highlands County, Highlands County and Fish and Wildlife are going to be setting up meetings in, I believe, December and January or February to discuss specifically Lake June. We will make sure we get those posted. We will probably send those out via email to the people that are, that have signed up and registered so that we get that information out as broad a public as we can. So there will be a couple of meetings specifically. I don't know any information more about it than that, but there are a couple of meetings getting set up specifically about Lake June, so.
I'd like to add about the growth part, that if the town was seeking growth, they would not be doing this on the lakes where there are already existing houses. That's not growth. That's correcting a problem, the way I see it. There are some developments that the developers are waiting for the town to approve their future gallonage and everything's on hold right now until this project is, I guess, further down the line. Secondly, as far as having the sewage pump to a location, this system the town's designing reduces the nitrogen by 95%. The nitrogen, I think, is what this project is about primarily, to get the nitrogen out of the, out of the systems and out of the water. Because it treats such a high standard, it'll eliminate that on the houses around the lakes. And I, I think that the argument for bringing it to a central point doesn't hold up because the system does treat to such a high level of nitrogen, it reduces 95%. That's a exceptionally high number. I'm in the industry and that's a hard number to hit. That's all I have for now.
Okay. And just, just for everybody's information, we still know we have a problem with this, with this microphone system. And we do have a purchase, a purchase order out there with Bassett Electric. So soon as they can get down here and get started, we are, are going to revamp this whole system and make it acceptable where everybody can hear what, what is being said. So that, that is coming, just, just to let you know. All right, if there's nothing else, we come forth town council. Meeting adjourned.